Good afternoon to our audience and welcome to this session on labor supply and its impact on healthcare. We have four speakers this afternoon. Yixun Chen from University of Chicago, Illinois, or University of Illinois, Chicago, I should say, my apologies, on staffing in US emergency departments. She'll be followed by Martin Hackman from UCLA, who will present a paper on long-term care labor markets in Europe. We'll then go to Ben Zeranko, who will present a paper on team composition and productivity from nursing teams in the English NHS. And finally, Dr. Giuseppe Moselli will present, from University of Surrey, will present a paper on staff engagement, job complementarity, and labor supply in the hospital workforce using panel data from the NHS. Please do post any questions you may have in the Q&amp;A function, and I will see them and post them to the relevant speaker, and there'll be an opportunity for you to, to vote on questions that you would like us to prioritize. With that, could I hand over to Yixun to present her paper? Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'm Yixun Chen from the University of Illinois at Chicago, and presenting a joint work with Dave Chen from Stanford University. So in the US, there is an increasing demand for healthcare, but physician supply is relatively inelastic. So there has been growing efforts to use physician extenders, who include nurse practitioners and physician assistants, to substitute for physicians and mitigate physician shortage. This raises important questions about what implications of physician extenders are for healthcare delivery efficiency. On the one hand, there are arguments that physician extenders could increase the supply of healthcare providers. This might improve access to healthcare and potentially improve healthcare efficiency. But on the other hand, there are arguments that, compared to physicians, physician extenders generally have less education and less training, and potentially lower intrinsic skills. The lower human capital of physician extenders may negatively affect healthcare efficiency. A key to this debate would be to understand the productivity difference between physician extenders and physicians. But rigorous comparisons between the two types of providers are rare. One reason rigorous comparisons are rare is patient sorting. Physician extenders typically treat healthier patients than physicians. This makes causal identification difficult. Another reason is data. There are not many data that track physician extenders. In this paper, we provide causal evidence that compares the productivity of physician and nurse practitioners, who are the most widely used physician extenders in the US. We look at this question at the Veterans Health Administration, the VHA. This is the healthcare system for the veterans population in the US. For simplicity, I would just call the VHA the VA from now on. The VA is the largest healthcare delivery system in the US. It provides care for more than 9 million veterans. In December 2016, the VA granted nurse practitioners full practice authority. So nurse practitioners, they can practice independently without any physician supervision. For example, nurse practitioners can bag most patients and order and manage treatments as independently as physicians. Also, the VA, they have administrative data that track both physicians and nurse practitioners. For identification, we use quasi-random variation in patient probability of being treated by physician or nurse practitioners in the emergency department. For results, we found that nurse practitioners increased patient medical resources. Compared to physicians, nurse practitioners increased patient length of stay by 11% and spending during ED visit by 7%. Also, this effect increases with patient disease complexity. For more complicated cases, nurse practitioners increased patient length of stay by up to 100% and spending by up to 25%. But even with this higher medical resource use, we see that nurse practitioners get worse treatment outcomes. They increased patient 30-day preventable hospitalization rate by 20%. For mechanisms, we found mechanisms related to lower human capital of nurse practitioners. We find that nurse practitioners are more likely to order formal consults and diagnostic tests to help with treatments and diagnosis. Also, nurse practitioners, they show prescription thresholds consistent with lower skill. We also find that lower experience could further increase nurse practitioners' performance gap compared to physicians in medical resource use. Finally, our estimation suggests that using nurse practitioners at the ED could lead to potential extra spending of 156 million per year for the VA. Even if we assume that one nurse practitioner can substitute for one physician and account for lower salary of nurse practitioners, we still find a net increase in spending for the VA. Let me talk us more details about our paper. Our data, as mentioned, is the VA's administrative data. We made a few sample restrictions. First, we use ED visits between January 2017 and January 2018. This is after the full practice authority has been granted to nurse practitioners at the VA, but before the COVID pandemic started in the US. Second, we use only visits to the EDs in the months that have granted nurse practitioners full practice authority, and use both nurse practitioners and physicians at the ED. This is because although this is a policy that applies to all VA's EDs, the local VA EDs could be different in when they adopt the policy and whether to use nurse practitioners at the ED or not. Finally, we only use ED visits during the daytime from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This is because the data show that there are few nurse practitioners at the VA's ED. They take evening or night shifts. Our final sample is quite large. In total, we have 1.1 million observations. For descriptive statistics, a salient pattern we can see is that nurse practitioners, on average, treat healthier patients than physicians. For example, patients treated by nurse practitioners, they are younger and have a lower number of comorbidities. As a result, it's not surprising that we see nurses, patients treated by nurse practitioners, appear to have better outcomes. They have, for example, they have a shorter length of stay and a lower cost. This suggests that simple OLS comparisons may not be able to identify the effect of nurse practitioners. So our identification is a quasi-experiment. We use the total number of nurse practitioners on duty at the ED on the day the patient visited as an instrument for whether the patient is treated by a nurse practitioner or not. I will show there is some that the number of nurse practitioners on duty significantly increases patient probability of being treated by a nurse practitioner. But patient characteristics and physician and nurse practitioners' characteristics are very well balanced across instrument, conditional on baseline controls. Our empirical specification is two-stage least-score estimation. We regress patient outcome on a dummy for whether the patient is treated by nurse practitioner or physician. And we instrument for this dummy with a number of nurse practitioners on duty at ED on the day the patient visited. We also include a set of baseline controls. These baseline controls include fixed effects for ED by year, ED by month, ED by day of the week, and ED by hour of the day, to account for possible differences across EDs and across time categories. In a full specification for robustness checks, we also include a set of patient characteristics. We cluster standard errors by provider. Here are our first stage results. So in Panel A, we see that when the number of nurse practitioners on duty increases, the number of physicians on duty declines. As a result, in Panel B, we see that when the number of nurse practitioners on duty increases, patient probability of being treated by the nurse practitioner increases very significantly. So we see there's a strong first stage relationship. But regardless of the number of nurse practitioners on duty, we see patient characteristics are very well balanced. So for each panel here, the middle number on the y-axis is the mean of the sample. The upper number is mean plus a half standard deviation. The lower number is mean minus a half standard deviation. We also report the coefficient from regressing each patient characteristics on the number of nurse practitioners, conditional on our baseline controls. We see that regardless of the number of nurse practitioners on duty, patient characteristics are very well balanced. The coefficients from regressing each patient characteristics on the number of nurse practitioners are not significant and very small in magnitude compared to the mean of the sample. Here we can see the reduced form results. In Panel A, we look at patient log length of stay. So here, we plot patient actual log length of stay in dotted blue circles, and for comparison, we also plot this predict log length of stay based on patient characteristics in hollow red circles. We see that patient actual, patient predict log length of stay is very well balanced, but actual length of log length of stay increases sharply with the instrument. Similarly, in Panel B, if we look at patient spending during the ED visit, we see that patient predicted spending is various balanced across instrument, but actual spending increases sharply. Our IV regression suggests that nurse practitioners compared to physicians, nurse practitioners increased patient length of stay by 11%, which is equivalent to 80 minutes for an average ED visit. Also, nurse practitioners increased patient medical spending in the ED visit by 60, by 7%, which is $66 for an average ED visit. We also look at additional outcomes. So in column one, we look at whether the patient is admitted to the hospital in the ED visit or not. So with, on average, we don't see significant difference between physician and nurse practitioners. But in heterogeneity, we see that for risky patients, nurse practitioners are more likely to admit them to the hospital. In column two, we see that nurse practitioners and physicians don't seem to be significantly different in terms of 30-day patient, 30-day mortality. But in column three, we see that nurse practitioners significantly increase patient 30-day preventable hospitalization.
Yixun, sorry to interrupt, just to say one minute warning. Thank you.
Okay, great. So maybe I should quickly wrap up. So here, in column three, we see the nurse practitioners significantly increased patient preventable hospitalization. The magnitude is quite big, which is 20%. So they, in a paper, would check a lot of evidence in support of exclusion restriction. In the interest of time, I will just skip this. For mechanism, in looking into mechanisms, we found mechanisms related to the lower human capital of nurse practitioners. First, we see that nurse practitioners' effects on increasing medical resource use increases with patient condition complexity. For more complicated cases, nurse practitioners' effects on increasing their medical resource use are larger. Second, we found that nurse practitioners collect more information. Compared to physicians, they are more likely to order consults and diagnostic tests. Third, we found that nurse practitioners show prescription thresholds that are consistent with lower skill. Compared to physicians, nurse practitioners are less likely to prescribe opioids, which have, which are drugs have very large adverse effects if they are not correctly prescribed. But on the other hand, nurse practitioners are more likely to prescribe antibiotics, which are the drugs would have very large adverse effects if the patient need a drug, but the provider doesn't prescribe that. Finally, we found that experience matters. When nurse practitioners gain experience, their performance gap compared to physicians in medical resource use would become smaller. Finally, we have two counterfactual analysis to see what would be the cost implications for the VA for using nurse practitioners. Since I have, I don't have much time, I will just be very brief here. We found that using nurse practitioners at the VA could even assign a quarter of the VA EDs' patients to nurse practitioners. That would lead to extra medical spending of 156 million per year for the VA. And even if we assume that one nurse practitioner is able to substitute for one physician and account for the lower salary of nurse practitioners, we still see a net increase of 70 million per year for the VA. But this extra spending perhaps may not mean it's not worth using nurse practitioners. If there are enough, if there are not enough physicians, it might be efficient to hire some nurse practitioners instead of letting patient wait long for care. So we consider the trade-off in terms of patient wait time and treatment outcomes. We consider conditional on patient warning and the number of doctors working, how more nurse practitioners could affect patient wait time and treatment outcomes. We found trade-off is like a 35-minute reduction in wait time for average patient could increase her length of stay by 20 minutes, and also total expected spending by $250. Let me very briefly wrap up. So in this paper, we found that nurse practitioners show lower productivity compared to physicians. In looking to mechanisms, we found several mechanisms related to lower human capital of nurse practitioners. We think this would be relevant for understanding the productivity difference between low and high skilled labor and the role of human capital for productive efficiency in healthcare. That's all my presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Yixun. And I'd encourage audience to continue to post questions for Yixun that she would address at the end of our session after we've heard from all of our speakers. Now could I invite Martin to present his paper? Over to you, Martin.
Great, thanks. Perfect. Thanks so much for having me. And I'm excited to present joint work with Jörg Heining and Holger Seibert from the EAB, Roman Klink from Harvard, and Maria Poljakova from Stanford. Let me start with motivation. The textbook view of public health insurance is that it provides welfare benefits from financial risk protection, but the welfare loss potentially from moral hazard leads to excessive consumption of care. Our angle is that health insurance policy can also review as an industrial policy. Think of this as a product subsidy for healthcare services that leads to increased consumption of care. And this may lead to investments on the supply side, additional hiring, and more broadly relocation of factors of production between healthcare sectors, between firms. And that could be quite important, particularly if we think about sweeping health insurance expansion. Nevertheless, these aggregate effects, in particular, was in England, the supply side, have received relatively little attention thus far in the health economics literature. And it's also not clear how these supplies and responses may be mediated by frictions in input markets. Today, we're going to think about labor markets and their reasons to think that there are frictions in input markets. And so how will basically the supplies, this insurance expansion, interact with potential frictions on input markets? And what are the welfare implications? If they're input, if they're wages, so to speak, in input markets, then they need to be accounted, then they're welfare relevant, and they need to be taken care of and accounted for when we want to make normative statements about health insurance expansions. So in this paper, I want to speak to these angles. We want to do two things. First, we want to quantify the relocation of a key factor of healthcare production, which is labor. And we're going to provide evidence on this in the context of the sweeping massive insurance expansion. And second, not so much time for it today, but we'll think about the conceptual framework, how to nest these facts into broader welfare calculation, the spirit of a second best, going back to Harvard. Right. Let me talk a bit about the setting in the limited amount of time. So we're going to study Germany. There's an interesting sweeping long-term care reform in the mid-'90s, where in the mid-'90s, they rolled out universal long-term care insurance coverage. It's a program where it's not means tested access to insurance. It is based on medical necessity. It's a massive rollout. Nevertheless, there's cost sharing for the patients. Forty to 50% of the basically price still have to pay, be paid out of pocket. But it's still a massive liability for the public spending. Public spending tripled for long-term care spending alone. It went up from five to 15 billion euros per year. So that's, you know, ballpark from 0.2 to 0.6% of GDP. So that's a large expansion. And just to situate this reform, what was the context prior to this? Well, beforehand, Germany had means tested public support for long-term care in place. In the US, it's more comparable to Medicaid. So that's what it started from. But now they provided universal coverage to everybody with medical needs. Another key feature that I want to highlight, and I'll come back to this later, is the market is dominated by public and not-for-profit firms, in particular church-owned not-for-profits. And that's relevant because they have very distinct wage setting. They're subject to collective bargaining agreements. And this is going to be a key input friction or friction in these labor markets that I will come back to later. Okay, so that's the setting. Our data are employee, employee match data. We have universal coverage over 40 years. See essentially everybody. We have detailed information, administrative data on industry occupations, earnings, and select worker demographics. We focus for the most part on employment in skilled nursing facilities that we can identify from this industry codes. And we're going to study how to employment, how does entry, and also largely how does employment change in skilled nursing facilities and response to this, to this, to this reform. Okay, we have also hand collected, you know, this is always tricky if you go back to the mid-'90s and become Canada historian because you have to hand collect some other complimentary data. So we needed to hand collect how many people who had access to the means tested health insurance program before the reform. And that's going to be important for identification strategy. So we used statistical reports here and filled that in. We also have data on mortality outcomes, but I'm not going to talk about those today. All right. The research design is very simple. It's in spirit to Amy Finkelstein's work in the Medicare rollout. So the idea is that post-reform, all these counties or markets reached 100% of insurance coverage, but they had a different point of departure prior to reform. Prior to reform, counties differed in the composition of people that had access to means test insurance. And so different local regions were differentially exposed to this reform, right? Some saw very large increase in coverage and others much smaller. And so we're going to exploit this type of variation in the change in insurance coverage in the standard definitive design. Okay, what do we find? So as a first sniff test, we're going to, first, yes, sniff test. So as a first pass, we're going to look at workers in skilled nursing facilities. Our outcomes here are going to be denominated in 1,000 elderly people. And the blue line looks at counties that have above median exposure. So they're relatively, they were largely affected by the reform. And the red ones had below median exposure, so they were less affected by the reform. And you do see that over this very long period, they follow largely parallel trends until the reform, and then they start to diverge. That these counties, they were largely affected by this insurance expansion, by this large demand shock for care. They saw disproportionate growth in employment in sniff workers. So this is just looking at the binary cut, right? High exposure, low exposure. We can also use the full continuous exposure, asking about how much were different regions affected. And then you can present these results in a sort of event study design. Let me start with the right one. That's the analogy to the former figure. That's again looking at sniff workers. And we look, see relatively parallel trends pre-reform, and then coinciding with the reform, we see a large uptick in sniff employment in those markets and these counties that were largely affected by the reform. These effects are large, okay? So a nine percentage point increase in insurance coverage leads to 7%, 13% more workers. And it's not only just the workforce that expands. We also see quite a bit of entry. Again, today, I'm not going to talk so much about this, but this is the left figure. We also see entry of skilled nursing facilities coinciding with the expansion. So put together, these results imply a large elasticity and arc elasticity of 0.8. And that's actually higher than what studies from Rand or the Oregon experiment would suggest. Okay, so we see, that's the first takeaway, large expansions in hiring in particular, and also investment in entry, but focusing for now on the, on the hiring front. We then looked at what happens to wages. And so I have to say, I was puzzled at first when I saw this, because I expected if a sector wants to expand, if they want to hire more workers, they have to post higher wages. But that's not what we see. If anything, we see a small decline in the starting wages for new hires and also for incumbents. These effects are go further to zero once you control for worker demographics. So conditional worker, we don't see anything. If anything, it might suggest that these workers are slightly less skilled, they were newly hired, and that may lead to an unconditional fall in the wages. So we look at this more directly. We just ask, you know, what are the demographics of these new hires? And where are they coming from? And as the former slide suggested, it is true that these new workers, on average, less educated, less likely to have completed an A-levels, a B-levels in Germany. They have less experience in the labor market. And they're much more likely to be unemployed and/or not in the labor force at all. Okay, so what you see is there's a massive expansion in jobs, and they are predominantly lower skilled workers coming in, oftentimes not being employed in the first place, either unemployed or out of the labor force. Now, one thing that's obviously interesting is were actually jobs here created on net? And this test doesn't quite get at this, because if you play the devil's advocate, you might argue, you know, maybe some of these unemployed people would have gotten jobs anyways, even if there hadn't been, you know, a massive demand shock and insurance expansion. So how can we do this? How can we get at that question? And so what we do is we, we switch perspective in the second part of the empirical analysis, and go back to the unemployed people, and can study their counterfactual worker careers. Right? So we're going to ask, think about unemployed in a given local labor market. Now they're hit by a large demand shock. And now I want to know how does that, that effect, the counterfactual career outcomes? Now, this is very challenging, because obviously, a lot of unemployed people are not on the margin of starting a job at Sniff's, right? So if you did it in a population, you probably wouldn't find anything. So we need to narrow it down to a relevant set of workers that are potentially at risk or potentially affected by the reform. How do we do this? This is where machine learning tools come in. We use regression tree model to use the history of these workers and predict which unemployed workers have increased probability of joining Sniff's in the near future, right? So it turns out, what is predictive is if these people had a history, agenda is predicted, but also if they have a history in healthcare, if they worked prior to the unemployment spell for a couple of years in healthcare, they're much more likely to join a healthcare job in the future. So we do this. This is what the regression tree tells us. We find significant predictors. And then we can narrow down a risk sample. We're going to focus on workers that have a 1% chance of being hired in the skilled nursing facilities within five years. That's a potential, right? It's not what, that they were actually hired. It's just the probability of being hired. It just says these people are potentially affected by the It just says, these people are potentially affected by the reform. And we define those then as our study center, right? These are people who are not yet working at Sniff's, but based on their history, have a high propensity of joining Sniff's in the future. Okay, and so in this sample, we can now say, if you shock these people with a large demand shock, how do their careers change? Right, are they joining Sniff's and what other careers are they giving up? And so that's what we do here and we find consistent with our former estimates that Sniff employment goes up, right? That's not new, but what's interesting is that we see a net decline in unemployment. And so now you can interpret this, now you can say that these unemployed workers would have stayed unemployed for extended or longer periods of time had there not been the large demand shock. Okay, so this suggests that this reform creates job on net, particularly if we look at these people who are not yet in Sniff's in the first place, right? Okay, so that's sort of the facts on employment and on wages. In the last few minutes, I wanted to talk a bit about the frictions. I mentioned this in the beginning, so what are the inefficiencies here? I have to say, that's a bit preliminary, but what we do here is we can do this for occupation. We looked at these wage profiles in a left figure by years of experience across ownership types. Okay, so the left one plots the daily wage, it's a log daily wage, it's, you can think of this also as the annual income, the way it's measured. And on the horizontal axis, we group workers by their experience in healthcare in years. Now, as I mentioned, the green dots, the not-for-profits, they dominate the market. And but there are some for-profit firms as well and they're an interesting benchmark because they're not bound to collective bargaining agreements. Okay, so we view conceptualies for profits as sort of a competitive benchmark, right? What would be the competitive price for labor? What would be the competitive wage? And you see some very interesting differences in these wage profiles between not-for-profits and the for-profits. Two things that I want to highlight. First, throughout the entire skill distribution, it seems that these not-for-profits pay higher wages than the, you know, competitive benchmark, than what is for profits pay. Second, you see that these wedges and wages are more pronounced at the lower tail of the skill distribution, right? And that's because of wage compression. Institutionally, it's not for profits in the public. They follow wage tables that are function largely of age, actually, and sometimes a bit of experience. And they narrow down basically how much wage discrimination, how much price discrimination can be based on skills. And that's what you see, you see this in two ways. First, you know, along the experience distribution, you see that there's less variation in the for-profits and also within an experience bin, right? So here, this, this intervals here, the plot the seventy fifths, visa v the twenty fifth percentile of wages. You see that this bandwidth, these, these windows are smaller, tighter compared to the for-profits. Okay, so this again shows that there is a lot of wage compression, this not-for-profits and that they pay higher wages. So this is basically, this makes labor at the bottom of skill distribution very expensive for these not-for-profits. And the not-for-profits have high incentives to hire at the top. That's what you see in the right chart. Here, we're looking at the skill distribution of employees by ownership type. And you see if you compare not-for-profits to for-profits, they go more for the lower skilled workers. Whereas the not-for-profits have a larger share of higher skilled workers, right? For them, they don't pay so much of an upgrade, they'd rather go for the higher skilled workers. And that's one way to put it. Another way to put this is that there is excess supply of workers, right? A lot of lower skilled workers forego twenty to thirty percent of the wages and go for, work for for-profits. And that suggests sort of they would be happy to, to work in these not-for-profits, but there isn't enough demand for them. In part because wages are too high, right? So the summary of this is, let me just conclude then is, is first of all, I tried to convince you on the facts, you know, what happened with the reform that led to a large expansion of Sniff workers and employees. I also showed evidence that wages didn't change much. We also have some suggested evidence for small decline in elderly mortality, I didn't talk about this today. But coming back to this frictions, there's suggested, there's evidence that this not-for-profits pay super competitive wages. They're also compressed and these wedges are particularly large for lower skilled workers. And so that implies that employment for low skilled workers is inefficiently low, these wages are too high for these not-for-profits to, to, to hire them at large. And so that means that there's a lot of excess supply of workers and so if there's a demand shock, the, the church and not-for-profits can simply expand, hire more workers without increasing the wages, right? So that's squares with the, with the findings that I presented. Now, in the last part of the paper, we embed these wage wedges into, you know, a welfare framework in the second best and sort of we extend sort of.
One minute, one minute to go, Martin.
So we extend, we embed these wedges in these input markets into a standard welfare framework and extend this traditional that way, those triangle in the output markets with an input wedge, with a wedge in input markets. And, and we find actually that these wedges in input markets are large. And that in a second best sense, an insurance expansion may be actually wealth enhancing. It's reducing wealth and output market through more hazard, but it can generate substantial surplus in labor markets. And once you take that into account, the net effect can be, can be actually positive for insurance expansion. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Extremely interesting findings in both of those first two papers. But without, in the interest of time, can I just hand over to Ben to present our third paper, please?
Sure, thank you. And thank you, Martin and Yishon, two great presentations to start with. I'm going to present some work with my colleagues Carol Proper and Elaine Kelly. It's very much work in progress. Any thoughts, criticisms, comments, very welcome. We're going to be looking at teams of nurses in the English National Health Service. So I want to start thinking big picture, just about teams in general, who, teams play a really important role in all sorts of professions and industries and sectors, not just about healthcare. I'm thinking about construction, academia, sports, corporate law. There's all these settings where teams form when gains from knowledge sharing and specialization and the complementarities between workers with different sets of skills allow those teams to be more productive than just some of their individual parts. Yet despite the fact that teams are everywhere, I don't think they've been adequately covered or studied in the detail that they deserve in the economics literature. And in particular, in one way, which is that typically when economists have looked at teams and looked at the impact of the organization of teams on what individuals produce. So there's a whole set of really nice papers looking at sort of peer effects where the ultimate outcome of interest here is individuals' wages and looking at how people learn from coworkers, for example. And there's papers looking at what happens if we provide these incentives to the team, what does that, what does that need to individuals' behavior? How does that behavior change typically in fairly lower skilled settings like fruit picking or supermarket cashiers in some of these cases? And there's been less focus paid to cases where the output of the team is really collective and can't be attributed to any single individual. So sport is one obvious example of that and there's some nice papers on things like basketball. Academia is another where when you have lots of co-authored papers, it's the product of the team, you can't attribute who exactly did what. And there's a couple of papers thinking about public sector agencies, like tax collection. But healthcare is probably the obvious setting here and, I mean, this is a healthcare session and I will be talking about healthcare. And there's papers by including some of my fellow speakers, looking at teams of healthcare professionals and their composition and their specific experiences and what makes them more or less productive. But I think there's still work to be done. So what we do is we're going to look at teams in what I think is an ideal setting, which is nurses in hospitals. And I'm going to convince you why I think it's such a great setting in which to analyze these questions. Well, first of all, nursing is a massive industry, employs a huge percentage of the working age population, lots of developed countries. It's not a really niche sector like pro football. It's very teamwork intensive and it's, you know, high stakes. It's also very highly skilled with collective outputs here that are really, you know, can be a matter of life or death. And we know that from lots of brilliant previous work, looking at the role of nurses, exploring things like pay regulation, strikes and parental leave programs in the case shown there. And so what we're going to do here is we've got this new dataset that is very high frequency and much available, much greater level of granularity than lots of what's been available previously, where we can link individual hospital patients to the nursing teams that are responsible for treating them. And our setting here is a single NHS trust in England, so that's a group of hospitals. In our case, it's three large hospitals. And important here is that the fact that patient care has to be provided around the clock. Patients don't just, you know, get treated between nine and five and then suddenly not need to look after anymore. These are sick patients who require round-the-clock care and the nurse shifts don't last twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There's lots of turnover between teams. Nurses typically work three to four shifts a week. Some nurses are in a very unfamiliar setting and there's lots of exogenous and plausibly random variation, not just in the composition of these teams in terms of who's working, but also their size, which clearly makes this setting different to something like sports, where the size of the team is fixed. And we're going to measure team productivity by the mortality outcomes for patients in the team, treated by the team. And mortality isn't clearly a catch-all measure, but it is very clearly and accurately and consistently recorded. And that is desirable and it's been used in lots of previous papers looking at healthcare production. So there's a couple of questions we're interested in. One is fairly simply, what is the impact of team size and team composition on patient outcomes? So we're going to be able to look at both the quantity and the quality of staff here. I'm also going to be very interested in the return to different types of human capital and skills. This relates to some of what Yishun was talking about. But we're going to be thinking within the category of nursing teams. So you can broadly think about, there's two categories. One is qualified nurses, registered nurses, who typically have a degree level qualification. The other group is nursing support staff, we can broadly group them as who perform more basic patient tasks and have lower levels of credentials. So that we might think that having a team that is made up of more qualified nursing staff and fewer nursing support staff has more general human capital in the way that Yishun was talking about, nurse practitioners versus doctors. But we can also think about more specific types of human capital here because key to the success of these nursing teams is communication and coordination between team members. And you might think that the costs of that fall over time, the more familiar you are with your environment or the more familiar you are with your team members. You can think about like a location-specific learning by doing model going on in the background or something like team-specific human capital being accumulated over time. We're going to be able to examine that. And we're also going to get within this black box of qualified nurses. So some previous papers, when, you know, looking at human capital of nursing teams have just said qualified nurses versus nursing assistants. We're going to look within the category of qualified nurses to look at sort of different levels of seniority and skill and qualification, and in particular, look at this role played by the bosses, the ward managers, those who are responsible for managing and coordinating the team. And we're going to find them to be extremely important. So I'll move quickly, a very brief description of our, of our data and empirical approach. I'd like to spend more time on the results. And so our analysis is going to be done at the, the unit is going to be the hospital ward day. So think about a team here as all the people who work together in a particular ward of the hospital on a particular calendar day. We have a single year of data for a year prior to the pandemic. So three hospitals, about fifty-two wards, so we have just shy of nineteen thousand observations with information on about four and a half thousand unique staff members. So just to show you quickly some summary stats, the numbers that really matter are at the top here for today. So in the average team, there's about one hundred ninety-five hours rostered, of which about fifty-three are healthcare assistants and about one hundred and forty registered nurses. So roughly speaking, the average team has about fifteen people in it and about four or five of those are healthcare assistants and about ten to eleven are registered nurses. And importantly, this line here shows that in the average team, their system is rostered months in advance and it tells them how many hours they should have for that team on that day. And on average, teams fill about ninety-five to ninety-six percent of those hours. But some days it will be much, much less, there's lots of variation in this. So teams are, you know, as standard, short-staffed here. And importantly, because of that, that rostering in advance and the fact that nurses work across multiple units, doing overtime, sometimes you have agency nurses, people often work across multiple parts of the hospital. There's sicknesses and so on. There's lots of staff rotation. So just to give a flavor of that, in the average month, a typical qualified nurse will work about ten shifts across one point seven wards. And on that average shift, they'll have recent, recent experience, so previous ninety days, they'll have worked with only about three quarters of their team members. So this really isn't a setting where you arrive at work and it's the same faces and you're working with the same people day in, day out. There's lots of variation, lots of turnover and churn, and that's what we're going to be able to exploit. So our empirical strategy is relatively simple. We are going to estimate a logic model where the outcome is just going to be, did the team experience a patient death or not? But we're going to include ward fixed effects because when a control for permanent differences across different wards of the hospital in terms of their medical specialty, their patient mix, their layout, management quality, whatever. But we're also going to include a whole range of time varying characteristics to capture things like how sick the patient's hours obviously, obviously matters here and also a set of time trends. Importantly, with our inclusion of ward fixed effects, all of our identification comes from within ward variation over the year in staffing and in their patient outcomes. Just to show you quickly, two important definitions we're going to be using in our, in our baseline results is we use a measure that's used by the hospital trust, but it's called what they call the fill rate. So we followed them in that, which is basically the fraction of planned hours that were actually worked. So we can distinguish between how many planned healthcare assistant hours there was supposed to be and how many planned registered nurse hours. And we construct this measure, which captures the quantity of staff. Okay, so moving on to some of our results. The first thing is that the size of the team matters. And if a team has an unplanned reduction in its size, if they are short by one qualified nurse, the odds of having a patient death increase by about ten percent. But importantly, we don't find any such results for nursing assistants, so the, the less credentialed, less highly qualified counterparts of nurses. So that says to us that teams that have higher levels of general human capital, those that have more registered nurses and fewer support staff tend to be more productive. And we find all sorts of other interesting things as well, which we won't have time to talk about all of today. But we find that the, the impacts are largest when the staff have high human capital, lots of different dimensions. So if we look within the category of registered nurses, if you lose or equivalent, if you gain an extra nurse in the very top pay band, so these are the most senior nurses, like the, the ward managers or NHS parlance, the modern matrons type people. They're worth more than twice what you gain if you have an extra newly qualified nurse. So you get about a nineteen percent reduction if you get a top pay band senior nurse versus about nine percent for a newly qualified one. We also find returns not just to, so we find evidence of firm-specific experience matching here, so your tenure inside the hospital trust. So if you were to take the team and even conditional on its skill and seniority mix, you would increase average tenure in the hospital trust by one year. You have the reduction equivalent to about two-thirds the impact of an extra nurse. So just to show you that quickly, think about this top section here as just controlling the quantity and the skill mix. If you look at the bottom, you can see big reductions associated with extra experience in the trust for registered nurses, but not for nursing assistants. So what that shows us is that there are, you know, signs of significant returns to types of specific human capital, whether it's firm-specific, location-specific or team-specific, but only we find that for degree-qualified nurses, which to us says there's lots of complementarity here between general human capital and more specific types of human capital. And we look as half as a robustness check and half because we thought it was interesting, we looked at plausibly totally unexpected unplanned absences. So people who are on short-term sickness, what happens to those people? What happens if those people are missing? And we find that particularly problems arise when the nurse manager or the senior nurse is missing. And when those people are off on short-term sickness, you get about almost a two-thirds increase in the odds of death. So those managers are playing a really important role and further things to look at that. Just to summarize, both the size and the composition of these teams matter. Short-staffed teams perform worse, which suggests that, you know, widespread shortages of nursing staff in the UK and across the developed world do matter for patient care. Teams with more human capital are more productive and importantly here, related to some of what Yishun was talking about, the skill mix matters a lot. So if you're short of qualified nurses, our, our results suggest that trying to substitute for that with less credential, less qualified nursing support staff won't necessarily have the same impact on, on patient care. So there's parallels there to swapping out a physician for a nurse practitioner. The bosses here play a critically important role and I think it's a really interesting agenda to be done on public sector managers and what makes them more productive and how. And then finally, these returns to very specific types of experience, so people who are more familiar with their environment and their team members are more productive. That suggests that there could be big gains from improving retention. Or if we could take into account shared work experience when we're allocating people across different parts of the hospital, perhaps we could improve patient outcomes even while holding the volume of healthcare inputs fixed. And that's everything from me. Thank you very much. Look forward to any questions.
Thank you very much, Ben. Um. We don't have submitted questions yet on our three speakers. But I suspect some of our panel members may want to ask questions of each other in the discussion at the end, so I'll give that opportunity. Um. But now, um, couldn't we hand over to Giuseppe to present our fourth paper? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much, Lorraine and everyone. Uh fascinating presentations. Um. So this is joint work with Melissa Sealy and Marco Malo still from the University of Surrey. In and in this, uh, you know, differently from the other um works presented in this session, here we focus just on labor market outcomes. Uh, as as you might be aware, uh, like the the situation of the NHS is is really let's say in trouble in terms of like the sometimes uh the lack of of the shortage of of workforce. And this is particularly important in terms of the nursing workforce. Well, we know that there are nursing workforce shortages uh across the world and this actually is a troubled situation that has been highlighted by Boise studies already uh in, you know, at the start and also WHO organization studies already at the start of the two thousand tens. But this is a situation that is actually um a worry worry something. So here what we investigate is the role of engagement and of job complementarity in the labor supply of the hospital workforce, using administrative datasets and survey datasets uh for the NHS workers, in particular senior doctors and nurses. So we tried to talk with several uh questions here and I will try to cover all of them more or less briefly. So one preliminary question that I will just postpone postpone for the moment is actually, uh, what are the determinants of staffing? Um, the this, the the core uh part of our analysis is actually how engagement and the labor supply complement complementarities uh across, you know, across uh groups of workers. So in this case, nurses and doctors play out in in determining the labor supply of the workforce at hospital level. Uh. Last but not least, we also try to cover actually how these engagement and complementarities uh, you know, not only um have a role in making workers being retained by their or by their hospital, uh where they are employed and by the NHS, but also whether actually this increase uh their labor supply in terms of margins. So uh let me just give you a bit a brief overview of the outcome and the uh one of the main variables. So um the stability index, like how do we measure retention? A retention of workers within a an organization has been, um, you know, has been a problem in terms of measurement uh that belongs to the human capital, human capital and organization literature, human resources literature. And actually, uh, the what has been proposed and is used by the NHS at the moment uh is using stability indices. Now, a stability index is is a ratio between uh the number of workers that are employed at twenty points in time. So let's say uh March of last year and March of this year and the the workers that were already employed in the same job post uh in the same organization uh one year ago. So if we think about this like uh in terms of, for for example, nurses employed uh nurses employed, uh, you know, that were actually that are still in their post this year compared to the one, the hundred that were um uh employed last year. If we have only ninety nurses this year of those that were already employed in the same hospital trust uh, which is the name of NHS organization that encompasses several hospital sites. Uh, well, we we will have actually that the stability index is ninety percent. Uh, what one important feature to take into account is that actually the complement to hundred uh percent of the stability index rate is nothing else than the numbers of levers uh which we can further split between the the churn. So workers that actually go and and are not retained by the hospital organization, but they are um going to work for other hospitals within the NHS and instead those that leave the NHS for good. Whether they they migrate to other countries or they they go to work for the private sector or or find another occupation. Uh, in what what engagement on the other hand is a construct that comes from the psychology management literature and encompasses not only job satisfaction but also commitment to the organization and the willingness actually to go beyond uh the the duties that the job, uh, you know, uh, as it is characterized from. Um. So what we have in mind here is a kind of a labor supply uh production function in terms of like or function in terms of the um uh let's say retention of workers uh for the sake of it, where they, for example, the nurses that are employed in hospital H at the given year T uh is a function of, you know, a persistence of this factor. So like the variable of the same stability index for the same occupational group, but then also the engagement score of the nurses that are employed at the same hospital in the same year and the um uh the labor supply. So they actually, how many uh senior doctors, for example, are retained within the same hospital in the same year. And some other time varying characteristics that in this case are both in terms of demographic composition of the of the workforce, but also of labor supply characteristics which might include, for example, the numbers of unpaid working hours that these the workers have to do uh by a weekly time. Um. And of course, what we are, so what we um have in mind indeed, that we 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 exploit within hospital variation. So uh we we estimated this variation across uh in within hospital, uh including time trends. Now, because the uh engagement score uh in the NHS uh are collected through uh a very large survey, which is actually one of the largest in the world in terms of workforce service. Um, uh, there, this this uh, this service are collected, um, um, the responses are collected every in the period, every every year between September and December. Um. So in order to make it our outcome variables consistent with this uh with this engagement measure, we measure the retention outcome between September of one year and um August of the following year. And we measure all the other characteristics prior to that. Uh. Now, the 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 big identification, uh, let's say, question about this uh this type of let model and this type of research questions is, uh, how do we identify this? Well, the the reason for this is that, of course, there might be problems with reverse causality uh between uh engagements core and the retention of workers. There might be problems of simultaneity bias, uh, uh, or simultaneity uh between the the retention of of nurses, for example, and the attention of doctors. And there are also eventual problems related to uh the response rate in terms of the service uh where there might be selective selective in responses that depends on the engagement score. So or what, given that we are not able to um to to exploit some exogenous variation to identify this, we have to rely on the system GMM uh regression to account for this. So we use a past values of of these variables as uh instruments to identify the the effects of interest. Um. Just so, let me just show you briefly the the main results. In terms of the main results, what we find is that very interestingly, uh, the effect of engagement is positive for retention. So we find for nurses. So what we find is that we have a positive effect on the stability index and the negative effect on the NHS liver straight for nurses. Um. In terms of doctors, the effects are still with the sign that we saw for nurses. But we don't find, they are not significant anymore um for the effects of engagement. The effects of complementarity uh of labor supply on the other end, they are i- interesting as well. Uh. And the reason for this is that while they go in the direction that we see, first of all, you can see that when we uh switch from fixed effects model to the more complex GMM models, the effect of the complementarities uh between nurses uh labor supply and doctors' labor supply fades. So basically, this means that uh we, the the um uh retention of nurses won't be affected so much, let's say, or statistically significant affect uh affect affected from the retention of doctors. On the other hand, instead, we find that the retention of doctors is positively significant affected by the retention of nurses. Now, uh, I will uh also um try to motivate you why these results apply. Uh. But let me also tell you that we estimate elasticities from these models and the elasticity from the the GMM uh models in terms, for example, of engagement uh and are are quite, you know, are larger than the weight elasticity of labor supply for nurses uh compared to previous study that had been done uh within the English NHS. Um. And so this is quite interesting and you can see also that from unconditional quantitative regression estimates, actually, these effects can be also sizably enlarged so that some of the elasticity that are estimated are actually, I mean, the 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 what the coefficients are elastic. Um. Having said that, uh, one thing that is dear to me is trying to, um, first of all uh to to, let's say, delve a little bit more into what is uh uh the research question one that is basically what are the determinants of the engagement score? So and the engagement score uh as a construct derives from several domains. Um, given that the way that it is measured, so we have the composite in several factors that are actually are not included in the way that it is computed, but that uh cover with it. And they are collected through this this stuff service. So uh these are uh satisfaction. So uh job characteristics, just like uh for how much our working hours workers are contracted for, whether they are bullied by manager, this discrimination, uh whether actually they felt unwell to work first stress or had to come to work despite not feeling well. Uh. And whether actually they uh felt uh they uh their career progression and promotion was fair by the organization. So these are all job characteristics. Then there are, for example, uh job satisfaction characteristics like the support from colleagues, the level of pay, the recognition for the good works, the responsibility given and their opportunities to use their skill. Uh, that the leadership of the manager of 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 these hospitals. So whether actually they uh try to involve staff in important decision, uh, the attractiveness of of the job. So whether actually the the these workers, nurses and doctors are pleased with the uh quality that of 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 the care they provide to 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 patients and also the resources that are uh actually that they have uh at disposal in order to to do their job. Um. As you can see, from, let's say, the most complete model, uh, which is these are models that are estimated with the hospital fixed effects, so within variation, you can see that um the uh, you know, all the coefficients are are quite uh reasonable in terms of like they are the expected sign. For example, these are all negatively, these characteristics are all affect negatively uh the engagement of workers while a fair career promotion and trust uh is uh affect the the engagement in a positive way. Uh, and similar, uh, we can see that, for example, the level of pay is important and statistically significant for nurses and it is not for doctors. In fact, doctors actually in the NHS are paid uh more than two times of what nurses are paid. Uh, what it is important to notice though is that when we go to the resources in terms of stuffing, and this actually uh kind of explains uh a little bit to what I was telling you about the complementarity story, is that uh they complement, let's say, having enough staff in the same organization to do their job is very important for the doctors while it is not necessary for nurses. And we, what we believe
One minute warning for you, Giuseppe, if I may.
Sure. Thank you, Lauren. And what we believe, disease is actually the fact that there is a high hierarchical structure within NHS so that like nurses are necessary for doctors to do their job while uh nurses can do their job, let's say, even without necessarily, I mean, we, they will need indication from doctors but necessarily can do their job uh even without. So this this is uh just like to to further motivate what we find. Um. Last but not least, please let me tell you that while the effects of of labor supply at extensive margins seems to be affected, as I showed, by engagement and for doctors by uh the 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 complimentary labor supply of nurses, this is not the case necessarily for all outcomes that can proxy, for example, labor supply at intensive margins. So what, one thing that we find is that actually engagement improves the labor supply in intensive margins for nurses. And based on GMM, we see that actually nurses decrease their sickness absences rate where they are more engaged. Uh, but this doesn't apply for doctors. Um. On the other end, uh, we, and and these results are 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 also supported by unconditional quantitative regression results. Uh, in terms of instead hours work, we don't find significant results, at least at the mean. While for both nurses and doctors, uh, we we find some result yeah in terms of the 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 unconditional uh quantum distribution of the of the outcomes of our swerve, uh, but this shows us that we entered this that like both engagement and the complimentary labor supply doesn't affect much this kind of outcome. So the main takeaways in terms of policy implication for this work is that engagement matters a lot for labor nurses, labor um uh supply of the nurses. Uh, it increases its retention uh both within the NHS organization and it avoids the emerage of these workers from the NHS. Uh, and also in decreases the incidence of sickness absence absences for these workers. On the other end, the retention of nurses matters for the retention of doctors, given that they can be seen as as a as an input eh in in the labor supply of doctors. So uh our consideration is that it is important for policy healthcare policymakers, both we within the NHS and in other systems, healthcare systems that are similar to the NHS that to improve engagement and retention of nurses, because this will also carry a positive spillover effects on the retention of senior doctors. And with this, I thank you for the attention and I welcome any question on this.
Thank you very much, Giuseppe, and to all our speakers for fantastically interesting papers and very, very policy relevant. The uh to the NHS, but I think in um, I think in some of these labor market issues are underworked fields and they're challenges facing all of the um upper income countries and even more lower income countries where I work. The, I wonder, given that we have not received any questions through the um through the conference pack platform, first of all, to an audience listening, please feel free to use that platform, but also I'd encourage you to get in touch with the paper authors if you'd like to engage engage with them in more detail, particularly on drilling down into some of the metrological and data questions you may have. Um. But I wonder if we could just use the remaining twenty minutes that we have to invite our um our presenters. But I wonder if we could just use the remaining twenty minutes that we have to invite our, our presenters to, in turn, to either comment or pose a question to their fellow authors. Because we've got some, some particularly related themes in Ben and Yichun's paper, Yichun's paper. But you're all working in the same field, so I imagine that you may also wish to pose questions to some of the other panelists and presenters we have today. I wonder if I could turn to each of you in the same order on which you spoke and offer you an opportunity to comment or pose a question to another member of the, another speaker, beginning with you, Yishun.
Sorry, Laurie, do you make questions for other panelists and speakers?
Yes, if you'd like to pose a question to another, to another speaker, or alternatively, if there's something you really were burning to say before I act as chair and cut you off, that you really would like to add now, please do so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure. All papers are super exciting and really really great to sit here and listen through all these papers. Maybe I would, maybe my question, as Lauren said, my paper, on my research very, very well related to the paper Ben presented. And one question actually, I'd really like to ask is that in our setting, is it possible to claim that also the doctors, they are randomly paired up with nurses? So we can also quantify the importance of complementarities between different types of providers. In addition to complementarities feeding nurses themselves. So this will be the question, really interesting. And Martin's question, Martin's papers, I really liked the general equivalent effects of insurance expansion. Perhaps one question I'm really interested in is that what's the value added of this additional workers hired? So you mentioned that there's declined mortality, in a sense that might, it might be that the long-term care insurance induce healthier people to enter the long-term care, healthier patients to enter the long-term care market. But also we may think that additional staff may contribute to mortality decline. But maybe my question will be more like a different for those, whether we can tell something about the value added of this marginal workers compared to those workers who are already, who are not affect the workers who are already on the market with all this expansion.
Thank you very much, Yishun. And could I, to stick to, to the order on which you spoke, I wonder if Martin, you would like to address Yishun's question and then pose any additional question you have before we turn to Ben to answer, to collect up any more questions for, for your paper, thank you.
That sounds great. Yeah, Yishun, thanks so much for the question. Just to clarify, on the mortality, we looked at population mortality accounts. So not conditional on being in the SNF, so that's robust to, or not affected by selection. And so that's fine. I think the mortality results, they're a bit underpowered. So if they pointed in negative direction, but they are, I mean, we have them, but yeah, ideally you would like to have some micro data. We only have them at the course level. And we have done different things between countries too, actually. They all point towards slight decrease in mortality. Yeah, but it's, they're a bit underpowered. I think some specification or margin is significant. Yeah, that's that. Our take is more on the, viewing this in the labor markets. Depends on the specific model of the labor market, but if you, you can basically get these wedges, you know, the welfare gains from employment in the labor market per se, if you set up a search model, diamond, this series model, type model, then you can reconcile these wedges through, it's called a Hosea's condition. So you can get these welfare surplus, you can essentially read them off in the labor market. So that's another way to go about this. But yeah, that's a great, great point. Thanks much. I had a couple, you know, one question each too. Yishun, I, I thought your paper was very clear and super important. I've thought about related questions too about nurse shortages in Denmark. And obviously, there's always been the question in charge, just whether we empower other occupations. I guess, one thing that I was wondering is the fundamental trade-off, I mean, you made a strong case that these nurses, practitioners are less productive. But that's, to some extent, only one side of the trade-off, right? You know, there is value added by having access to care and I guess, you mentioned this a little bit in a way that went a bit too quick for me, but how, how you think about this? That basically, even if it's less productive, how valuable is it and how does that relate relative to the magnitudes that you find? Also, in the given setting, it might be really that, you know, you really substitute nurse practitioner against the physician. There, you would expect that the doctor is better. But is that the relevant counterfactual? Should it be a counterfactual where, you know, there is just nobody around otherwise? Yeah, so I was curious to hear your thoughts on this. Others, Ben, I thought your paper was super interesting too. And I guess one, one natural question is, is there is, is, is this the team composition, the only thing that changes, you know, from, from month to month or from week to week? And one potential other factor could be changes in the patient composition through seasonality. I wonder if there's a way to use some IV approach, you know, maybe on distance to the hospital or some other approach to get some maybe random variation of patients to these teams, is that possible? And then exploit this difference as a complementary approach or use as other IV designs in the literature. So maybe that's one other complementary approach to yours, but I thought it was super interesting. And for, for Giuseppe, I also thought it was cool. I guess my question was, you know, are these, are there major differences in this organizational structure? So it seems that what you, you made in a compelling case that this organizational structure is, you know, how they treat employees and the promotion opportunities, they matter a lot for job satisfaction of these workers. And so do you see in your setting systematic differences also across these hospitals and healthcare providers in their management practices? Are there some, you know, benchmark cases, some lessons learned, is there a role model, you know, some provider who does it right, that could be copied? Can I, is there, is, yeah, I don't know if this, if you have looked at this and if there's yeah, it's something like a best practices, right? Is there, let's say, subset of providers who get it right? And then they may have specific policies that you can implement across others. But yeah, thanks so much. Learned a lot. Great papers.
Thank you, Martin. It's a great questions too. Now, Ben, could we?
Yeah, I'll take Yishun's question first, which was about, do we have information about the doctors? So can we get as a fuller picture of the inputs into healthcare production in this setting? The answer is, I would love to. Our current battle is trying to get the data provider to give us more data. And they basically now want us to have something to show for it first. So hopefully when we can show some cool stuff with nurses, maybe one day I'll be able to add doctors in as well. But I'd definitely be interested in doing that, because I think there's a lot of parallels to be drawn between that sort of doctor, nurse practitioner switch and then from nurse, from a nurse to nurse assistant and how, putting it all together would be, would be really cool, but it's not something we're able to do right now. On Martin's question about sort of whether there's other things going on when the team composition changes. So things like seasonality shouldn't be a problem because we're controlling for a month of the year and day of the week and stuff like that. It is possible, we would worry, we thought it's a lot, like what might be going on. It also, and the adogeneity of the staffing to the patient mix as well. I think that if it was gonna, if the bias was gonna go in any way, you'd expect that, you know, when teams are, when the teams are treating a set of patients who are much sicker than we can tell observably, so unobservably more sick, they'd get more staff on. And so you would have still spurious positive correlation between staffing and patient outcomes. And I think that that would bias our results up towards zero. So if anything, based on results, probably underestimating the quote-unquote true impact. We've thought about, so I showed some very briefly some results on what happens when there's a short-term sickness absence, which is possibly unexpected, possibly totally random. We find consistent results and that those results are particularly strong for the senior staff members. I guess an extension might be to think about using some of these unexpected absences as instruments for low staffing, for example, and maybe push it in that direction. But, you know, there's a distance from hospital and things like that. This is, we haven't got like a national sort of little data set here. We're sort of fairly, it's only a subset of the country and it's probably not going to be too much for us to exploit that, given the part of the country it's in. So I don't, there's definitely, I think there's more for us to do on convincing it, it's random and convincing that it's, it's plausibly causal. But yeah, there's more for us to do to tag that out. Am I, I have some, some questions?
And one quick follow-up on this, Ben.
Sure, yeah.
So I, when, I, I do think, think that's sort of the group of line of work, for instance, right? They look at the strikes and then there are these short-term losses in nurses and then mortality goes up. That's one thing, kind of there, it's difficult for hospitals to, to respond to this. This is unannounced. And, but there's another question, is if there's a more permanent shift, right? If we think about nurse shortages, we might expect that providers can respond, plan for that. And nevertheless, they cannot offset them entirely, right? So I always thought that those are two sort of different elasticities in a way, right? Where either, you know, an employee dies or it's just gone, right? There's just nothing I can do about this and it's a short-term surprise, negative surprise. But there's another question, I think, for shortages, that if you allow these providers to respond to it. So I guess you can speak to both of them potentially, because you have some more persistent variation in, in the team composition and some more very short-term. And I guess it would be interesting to see these magnitudes and how they differ. That was a quick, yeah, but yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's true. I guess we're sort of getting more at the short-term thing in the sense, because we're looking at this day-to-day variation, which just happens because someone goes on holiday, someone's sick, someone changes team, we get someone new, but they're different. You know, there's just lots of churn in these teams. So we're getting more of that, that day-to-day variation. But I guess if there's these longer structural changes that change the sort of skill mix of the profession, we're gonna, we might inform, inform that. But we've only got sort of one year of data, so we can't do anything too long term. But I think that those, though you're right, I think there's two separate and interesting questions there. So I had a couple of questions. So for Yishun, I was based on what, you know, what we're doing, nurse practitioners, I would have thought are some of the most experienced nurses in terms of some of the most highly qualified and highly credentialed nurses. And if you, I think you showed that with experience, they sort of get closer to doctors. I guess how much experience does a nurse practitioner needs to be even remotely comparable to a newly qualified doctor? I thought it would be an interesting thing. I wonder if you'd looked at that. Martin, I guess I was just thinking how, I was very struck by the differences between the for-profit sector and the, the church sector. And how German-specific that is in terms of other, other, my international knowledge is, is not well enough to know. But there are other countries where we have this similar sort of very different sectors, treating their workers very differently in terms of their pay and how, are there other applications, like this generalized model you've got? I was just trying to think of an example in my mind of what it would apply to and I don't know. I'm sure you do, but I was just, that struck me as interesting. And Giuseppe, I guess the ultimate thing that you left me thinking was like, okay, engagement matters. And, you know, getting the workforce to feel involved matters. And you've convinced me of that, I guess. Do we know what works? I guess related to Martin's question, do we know what works for improving engagement? Do we know what works for improving retention? Is it related to management quality? Is there much variation in these satisfaction scores within trusts? Or is this mainly a story of some trusts are better than others? Or even some hospitals within trusts better than others? That's what I thought was, that came to me. So I, I've just rambled for a bit, so I'll shut up.
Thanks. So I, I think it for me, I think that, so I, I directly answer Ben. So what I mean, actually, what the, the, the analysis of the determinants of, of engagement is a bit on this, in the spirit of actually this question of yours and of Martin. So this is the reason why we undertook that kind of analysis. We needed to see what works and that what was actually was driving engagement to improve, to what, 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 what are the characteristics or like basically the performances at the hospital, at hospital level, organization that seem to be working. And so actually, what, what we see is that, you know, several positive, let's say, basically not bullying the workers, not making them go to work when they are feeling well and so on and so forth. Or like involving in the decision, though these are all, you know, characteristics that matters. So on, on this sense, I think that actually we, we are trying to underpin what are these, these things. And actually, we see that there is a substantive variation within the organization. Well, also because otherwise we wouldn't be able to identify what we identify. So there are definitely winners and losers within the NHS. So, I mean, of course, more work can be done in terms of organizational differences. So there might be other characteristics that we are, we have not proxy for. One thing that it is important for me to, let's say, highlight is that, for example, there are not, you know, some unobservable that are not related to the organizations, like, you know, labor market circumstances, like outside wages that affect our analysis, we do. And, and analysis, we, we include the outside wages and the results are all still there. Let's say, an observation that comes, I couldn't show those results because I didn't have time. But I think, Ben, that this matters quite well with what you find for nurses' teams. So this is quite nice, is that we find, you know, in order to motivate the complementarity effect for labor supply of doctors, actually, we split the, the labor supply of nurses. So we split nurses' workforce into groups, both in terms of age and in terms of, of grades. And we find that actually the only one that matters for this complementarity are the, the oldest. So, and, and also the more experienced nurses. So I think that this matters very well with what we found in terms of, of the, of the organizational, basically, of the effect of mortality. And for Yishun, what I was wondering, actually, just to close the circle, is whether actually, you know, I, I was, I was quite, I won't say puzzled, but like, I, I'm interested in the results that links both basically lengths of stay and unplanned admission rates. So my, so I was trying, actually, I was trying to make sense of the results for unplanned admission rates. Well, we know that like, we, we, we don't see any effect on mortality, so this is reassuring. These nurses, nurses practitioners don't make people more, you know, more going to the graves. But at the same time, my, you know, I, I'm just wondering, is this effect of unplanned remission rates happening? Can it, can it be happening for two reasons that came to my mind? One is actually perhaps the, the patient don't comply with, with the treatment. That when basically there is a problem of credibility of the, of these nurses. So when basically the, the patient face the doctors, they trust the level of experience and instead this doesn't happen with the nurses practitioner. The other channel that came to my mind is actually through lengths of stay. Because we know that actually, when patients are too long into the hospitals, they, they can become even sicker. So there might be, like, there, there might be a healthcare production function that is U-shaped. So like the longest you stay, actually, yes, the one, either U-shaped or reverse U-shaped, depending on how you measure health status. But basically, the idea is that, that these, you know, longer lengths of stay, as you found as determined by nurses' practitioners, might actually be driving, you know, patient to even get sicker. I just was wondering whether this might be the case or not.
Thank you. Before I, because we are soon to lose our live link, I'd just like to say a thank you to our audience and to our speakers before we close our session. But such time as we have, Yishun, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. I guess I'm benefits of being the first speaker, so I will respond to the questions. First, to Martin's question about the value of nurse practitioners and what might be the relevant benchmark. Either compared to nurse practitioners to doctors or compared nurse practitioners to no providers in terms of welfare applications. So first, in terms of the value of nurse practitioners, I think, before seeing the results, I don't have their, I didn't have a very strong prior. So on the one hand, we may think that nurse practitioners, on average, have less education and less training. We may expect they have worse outcomes. But on the other hand, actually, there are arguments that are we overtraining doctors? Do we really need to train doctors too that much? So can we just lower the training and get nurse practitioners some less training and they also can do the work similarly? Also, there are arguments that since that Also, there are arguments that since that there's practitioners, their salaries actually are much lower than doctors. And are we overpaying doctors? Those pay, the pay difference between these two professions, and just because they are entry barriers to the doctor profession and the doctors enjoy the rents, or there's really productivity difference between the two professions? So this, my prior that, because it's two different arguments, actually, my prior was not very clear about which way the results may go. That since overall, if we compare nurse practitioners to physicians, it seems overall nurse practitioners have less productivity, lower productivity. So it seems there are some productivity explanations for the pay differences between the two professions. And in terms of the relevant benchmark, so in the first case, we try to see what would be the extra spending if we compare to the case, all cases are treated by physicians. What would be the extra spending to the VA if we assign some patients to nurse practitioners? But I totally agree with Martin's point that maybe another benchmark we can use is that compare nurse practitioners to no providers. So this would be the second counterfactual we're trying to get at. So we think about can holding the patient volume and number of doctors fixed? What would happen if we add additional? So I should stop, I see that we need to end this live stream.
I see we are losing the live stream, so thank you all.